We're adding all the study session to order at six thirty two P M. We can ask any questions please. City Mayor Domingo, if you will take roll call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams.
President.
Reid here.
Jackson.
Here.
Waller here.
Davis.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
And Nashville.
Here. So our study session is just to review um action items for our council meeting this evening. On the agenda listed first is to approve the River Trail Agreement. So in your.
Subject of the closed session.
Yep. Are we gonna discuss that now?
No, no, it's gonna be gone over close session.
Oh, the River Trail Agreement? Yeah. Oh. Officer, I'm gonna agree with you. Um. Our item for discussion would be the vehicle lease for Public Safety Patrol. That you're Jason or Scott. Want to give us some information?
Yeah, this is just a yearly request we do for a new vehicle for public safety. Uh we have it set in the budget for uh twenty two thousand dollars a year for the three year leases on the vehicles that become ours after that three years. Um we've requested a car every year now for as long as I can remember, basically. Uh the current, the the one that we requested in twenty twenty, we did not in my numbers right, in twenty twenty one, we did not receive until January of twenty twenty two. When we requested last year, uh we're about to receive, I think. So we're like running almost a year behind on vehicles right now. We're just throwing off the leases only because they don't start until we actually take possession of them. So we're like a year behind on the leases, but uh the other problem that we're running into is um in twenty twenty when we ordered the pickup, the Ford F one fifty that we have, it was thirty seven thousand dollars. The one that we bought last year now is forty four. Uh the price just keeps going up and that's like one of the cheapest cars you can buy now. Um it's getting harder and it's getting harder and harder to get them, so. Um we're basically a year behind, so.
Do we have any questions for Chief Kemp?
We don't pay until they arrive, so.
Right. Um and like I said, we do the three years, it's just because, I mean, basically, we're buying a car a year because we're paying for three cars every year.
Mm hmm.
Um but it it's just easier to do it over the three year lease than try to get us on buying the car every year, but my big concern right now is between the cost of equipment and cost of the car, it's definitely gonna go up. So this is probably the last year that I'm asking for the twenty two years probably gonna go up in there because the price of cars is just getting outrageous. So.
All right. Any other questions or comments? The next is approval of the twenty twenty park's milledge allocation. City Manager Slater, if you wanna give a simple.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um so Calhoun County, they have a five year parks milledge in place that um services all of the parks um countywide. Um we've accepted our allocation amount each year. I believe the first year was twenty twenty one. Um so our estimated allocation amount for this year is twenty five thousand five fifty one twenty seven. Um we used our allocation and then we rolled, uh we weren't able to complete the project for twenty twenty one, so that rolled over to be um combined with our twenty twenty two amount. Um last year, we were able to purchase a new mower for the Parks Department. We installed the ADA compliant walkway to connect to the new pavilion in Holland Park. And then we also purchased mulch to go in around the play structures in Holland Park. Um so for this year, we discussed this um when we had our budget work session, but with the new features in Macintosh Park and then just based off of some of the feedback or complaints that we received, we have seventeen parks and not the largest park crew to maintain all of those parks, we are um recommending that we hire two additional seasonal employees. Um this mileage that is an eligible use for the mileage amount to cover those wages that comes out to about, so where's the breakdown?
Page thirty three.
So total, it would be about twenty six thousand eight sixty. Um so that will cover the wages for the two seasonal employees and then um Sheridan Township, they are very grateful to um, they don't have any parks within the township, so the each year they use their allocation amount to do a project here in the city of Albion. Last year, they um improved all of the shuffleboard courts, so this year they're looking to repair or replace the um roof structures, so the pavilion little structures on the um shuffleboard court. When talking with the township supervisor, he's unsure if they'll have the full amount to cover that project, so he's just asked if we could cover the overage for that. When talking to him, he said about twenty five hundred will will be enough on in addition to there. So we uh budgeted twenty five hundred on top of what it would cover for the two um seasonal employees. We will have still some remainder left over. Um and I'm making the recommendation that we roll that over to this year. Um we have, we were awarded the grant through the M D N R for the um River Trail Expansion to go along North Albion Street to connect into Holland Park and then to go up into Macintosh Park. Um it does require a match. It um it looks like a thirty eight percent local match, so it comes to a hundred and eighty eight thousand five hundred that the city will be responsible for. So I would make the recommendation that we utilize um the remainder of this year's county park mileage and then what we get next year to go toward to support that match requirement in addition to other grants that we are going to apply for. Have to answer any questions or take feedback?
Thank you, Mary. Um, okay, so the trail to extend it from Holland Park to Macintosh Park is how much?
The total project is four hundred eighty eight thousand five hundred dollars. We got a three hundred thousand dollar grant to cover that and it's a thirty eight percent local match. That's that's a requirement for that, so we're looking, the city will be responsible for a hundred and eighty eight thousand of that total project.
All right.
But it ties in with all of the other um practice that we have going on. We've designed the North Albion Street Bridge to include that River Trail um connects to Holland Park, which also has another trail that can um runs through or runs by Holland Park. And then it will tie into the new features of the Macintosh Park.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for City Manager Slater?
Are they gonna redo the sidewalk coming from Holland going up? Is that what you're talking about, that they're gonna do?
Yeah, so it, um I believe it's the east side of the bridge structure that will all be replaced and then the sidewalk going towards Holland Park, that'll be rip, that will be the actual bike trail. So yes, that'll all be that'll all be um redone through this project. And I talked with Councilmember Reed earlier, our hopes, um once we get the bridge done, that River Trail looking to install a trailhead at Holland, Holland Park, so it'd be a new, a new parking lot, but we refer to as a trailhead, so um where people could pull in, park, unload their bikes, jump on the bike trip, they would want to spend time in um Holland Park, and that's another possible project that we could take advantage of the M D N R National Trust Fund grant that we just were awarded this year.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Next is our approval of the man of posterison engagement. Manager Slater had provided us information in the packet, but you want to explain a little bit?
Yes, so the city, um you all approved this engagement letter with our, this is our auditor firm for um twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four. Um to complete just a standard audit with the USDA wastewater treatment plant project coming up, they require us to provide an engagement letter from our auditor firm. Um but then they also um a single audit will more than likely be required, so you need to have a single audit completed in addition to your regular audit if you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal in federal funds. You um since we are taking advantage of a USDA that is a federal program, so we will more than likely need a single audit for, not for twenty twenty two, but we will need it for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Um so our auditor, um they provided us with a new engagement letter that includes a single audit um so that they will be able to complete that service in addition to our regular audit so that we can move forward with the USDA project.
Mayor, I'm gonna, yep, Johnson Williams.
Yeah, is there a reason why we didn't use one of the other years instead of, you know, next year recently?
Well, we won't expend those federal dollars until until this year and then twenty twenty four, because we're just getting started with that project, so we don't, so they, when they come in this spring, they'll be looking at all of our expenses from last year, and we didn't expend over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds last year, so.
Got you.
Um and then it's just a requirement of the USDA project, we have to provide an engagement letter two to three years out.
Makes sense, makes sense. Yeah, when I was reading it, um and then looking at the document that they sent, the dates, I'm like we haven't had this year yet, so yeah, it makes a lot of sense, all right, perfect.
Just gotta think ahead.
Yeah, thinking ahead, thinking ahead.
Any other questions or comments on this topic?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm glad you did, yeah. Kinda explained that because it seemed like this company, her size always comes back after we have already paid something. So I was glad that you explained a little bit more about that seven hundred fifty thousand. I seen it for the physical year and getting ahead of things, but it just seemed like this company always needs something else additional. I can go back into my notes if I need to, but that was just one of my concerns. I said, thank you for um giving a clear explanation.
Right? The next will be our approval for a unmanned drone from drug forfeiture funds. Chief Giff or Jason?
Good evening, everybody. Um. So we've kind of created a countywide drone team uh with us, Sheriff's Department, uh Marsha P D and the tribal police. And so what we're doing is the Sheriff's Department has a drone, the tribal police have a drone. And we're also having uh one of our current officers is getting trained as a pilot through the F F A A program. So uh I know everyone just, I don't know if everyone uh knew that there was a gentleman out in Marengo Township that was lost and the county used their drone team to find him. So this is, would be somewhat the same style drone. Their drone is like thirty thousand dollars, twenty to thirty thousand dollars. It's a little bit smaller sized drone, but it has a thermal camera on it and it can operate for doing like search and rescue is what we'd be using it for, along with uh crime scenes. So if we have a big scene, the drone team would come out along with the evidence tech team and they would fly the drone, take aerial photographs for us. Uh it also could be used on fire scenes if we have a big fire or an arson, get an aerial photograph that way as well, so. This is just one of the things that we'd like to purchase out of a drug forfeiture fund, just so our city and our members have a drone that would be used anywhere in the county with the county's team.
Do we have any questions for Deputy Chief Kern? Yep, Councilman Williams.
Yep, uh you said missing persons, large crime scenes, fire.
Yep, if it was like a do you remember when uh, how was it, right next to the old tire city, right before they moved, right behind McDonald's? That caught fire, we could send that drone up and then get an aerial photograph of it, or if there was like areas that were burning or had burned, we'd be, it'd basically be like a crime scene on the fire side of stuff.
Councilman French?
Not to mention that things like tire fires notoriously burn hidden and having your thermal camera able to go, you know, yeah, you don't see any smoke, but underneath it's still hot, so.
That's fast.
What is the lifespan of this particular drone and what about the upkeep?
So the biggest upkeep you're gonna have is batteries. These batteries, which is they're not just like a double A battery, they're a specialized battery that are actually heated, so it can fly longer in the winter time. Um the biggest expense is gonna be the batteries. They're roughly about anywhere from five hundred to fifteen hundred, depending if you get the heated ones or not. Um and then you have the, like if the the drone was to hit a tree or something like that, you have the blades that get broke. Um but what we've done with all of our equipment is we put it under the city's insurance policy. So instead of having to pay a thousand dollars for a new set of blades, we pay a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible and then our insurance would pick up the rest. So that would be one of the potential up keeps. Other than that, it's kind of like anything, computers. You know, well, right now we're getting the best one there is and the latest technology until next Monday. And then they'll be like, oh, yeah, well, we had this one coming out. Sorry, we didn't tell you. Uh so right now it's the the most up to date one.
Councilman French?
How big is the drug forfeiture fund at the moment?
It's, it was four hundred and thirty two thousand initially and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we took, we bought radios out of it.
I remember.
Um I think eight new tasers as well and body cameras.
Okay. So. Well, it's not a big gap.
No.
Johnson Williams?
Yep, um, okay, so a large concern for people throughout communities um in the country is the overpolicing of poor neighborhoods. Um what policy governs the use of drones um on this the surveillance of the citizens of the community?
Great question. I knew it was gonna come up. So for using drones for surveillance, that's not what the licenses is for through the FAA and also through the county. The county has, we're operating under the county's umbrella. So to use a drone for surveillance, you, a lot of times you have to have search warrants to do that sort of thing. The courts have ruled that I just can't send it up and get a picture of someone's backyard and then bring it back down. I actually have to get a warrant now. Um on top of it, we have a very limited sight distance. So if we're gonna do any type of aerial surveillance at all, especially if it's drug related, we would usually National Guard and use their counter drug that actual helicopter to do that instead of a drone. Um the other thing too, if the drone crashes, we have to file a report with the FAA. Uh and from my understanding, it's like this, it's thick and typical governmental uh paperwork for an accident. They actually will come out and it's like a regular uh airplane accident, so we don't use it for that sort of thing. We would use it for anything like search and rescue, emergencies, crime scenes, that nature.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have another question.
Yep.
Uh this would be more so for Cullen about the use of forfeiture funds, piggyback off the question that Councilman French had. Um what were the uses of the forfeiture funds again?
So it depends on if they're state forfeiture funds or the federal uh state forfeiture funds was, is, I think it's still a seventy five twenty five split where seventy five percent has to be used for strictly law enforcement purposes and the other twenty five percent were like for victim education, victim services. The federal rules are different. I think it's just
and you have Treasury and Department of Justice, this is treasury.
Right, and but either way, I think at the federal level, they they don't have the same seventy five twenty five split. I think it's just all law enforcement purposes.
Yeah.
All right. Can you email that out to us too?
Sure.
All right, perfect, thank you.
And any other questions or comments in regards to this topic? Yes, Mayor, for Tom Jackson.
Trying to make sure I get them all answered. I had a long list from some citizens, this ones. And you did say that it would be prepared if it was damaged, you said no more, not damaged, but the going on cost basically maintained would be batteries.
Yes.
Okay. And then also it, it asked, uh does the city insurance provides provider know the city will be flying the drone, which that is, all right, yes. And are they prepared to cover any costs associated with any potential damages, accidents by the drone?
Yep, so that would be, that would fall under our insurance program.
All right, I mean, because I heard you say something about FAA, I make assurance, ask their questions, so.
Right.
Okay, it was a long list, so I do believe you did answer the other ones to other people's questions, so thank you so much.
Time to prepare.
Exactly.
There you go.
And then our last topic for the evening is to approve uh the installation of upgrade of the HVAC system or training center for ADPS. In your package, you have the um quotes that were provided and the recommendation. So Chief Kern or Deputy Chief Kern, are you gonna?
Yep. So uh the old, the building down at the end of Cass Street, the old Heaven's Body Shop, that's been a large storage facility for us, uh keep a lot of vehicles down there and other stuff for public safety, both bleak and fireside. Well, the furnace that's in there needs to be upgraded drastically because it's old. It was kind of a Band-Aid fix. First took it, the building over, come back. And then the other thing we're doing is we're actually adding some training space in there to do search and rescue and so and so forth on the fireside. So we built, uh we have a couple of areas that we put together to where we could have like a like a training dummy that would lay there and we go in and smoke the room up and then pull it out. And so for us to do that, we need to put a new HVAC system in along with upgrading the existing ones and we're gonna keep the evidence we have and the vehicles um that we have um instead of just letting things freeze, it does have water down there as well. Uh so we can wash up or do whatever when we need to. And so in order to to keep up with this and upgrade it to do what we need to do on the fireside, do our trainings with Sheridan and Holland Township, put a furnace and fix the one that's there.
Questions? Comments?
First, I was concerned because there's a large range in terms of the process that came in, and are you going with just the some least expensive or how are you?
So I am going with the least expensive, but I also know that how I did it is I looked up both in Calhoun County, went with anybody that had a four point five or four point seven star review on Google and Yelp and also did a little bit of background on it. And that's why I went with uh Ms. Barboree, that's now we've had him do current work at the fire station. Um Kitter has done a good job for the city of, for the other municipalities. I personally have used Eric Dale before as well, and he's also a retired firefighter for Marshall Township. And so those three companies have the best reputation and the best reviews. Um Eric Dale just happened to be the cheapest bit. And it's actually for a little bit better furnace. I think a ninety six percent efficient Lennox furnace. So.
Councilman French?
I'm sure we're all thinking it. Only one of these three businesses is a local business and it's also a minority owned business and so um and I know it's the most expensive of the three, but um I just want that to be known. I think I would support a local business over um another business, but I could be persuaded otherwise.
That was my unspoken sentiment.
It it is quite a bit and that's the, that's the only thing, man. Look, I, it's I don't know, nine thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
It's like.
Yep.
Yeah, it it's kind of like, they both do great jobs. They're both here in Calhoun County. Uh I I like I said, we've used uh Barbara heating cooling on other projects that we've had and other repairs. No complaints, always a perfect. Uh we had them install a heater for us. Great guys. It's just so that's a big.
Well, you can't.
Actually, I can, I can't, because I was saying, you know, this guy was a little cheaper. No, I just tried, I was like, look, I just need to get bits. I told everyone I need to get bits for this and.
I know.
But. The furnace, I I then I started looking at the difference. The furnace is a little bit better, Eric Dale. It's a Lennox and it's a higher efficiency. It's a little bit. The furnace is a little bit better, Eric Dale, it's a Lennox and it's a higher efficiency, it's a little bit stronger furnace, and so I was like, oof, okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Well.
All right, Deputy Chief Kern? All right, public comments, anybody in the gallery, if they would like to stand and address council, you have the opportunity to do that at this time. Do you have anybody else? No, you guys. All right, you have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, we have somebody.
She's, she's.
I was just calling up.
So move.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned six fifty seven P M, be back in three minutes.
I can't get to the, it's getting, I hope in three minutes.